Okay. All right, everyone, welcome. It just feels so full in here. Hey, this is very exciting. So, I'd like to get the meeting going and Danielle's gonna start with the housekeeping.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format, although I don't think we have anyone. Oh, we might have some attendees joining online. So just a quick housekeeping note for the members of the public who are joining the meeting via the computer device or phone, please be advised that your microphone webcam and phone are automatically muted when you enter the meeting. Commissioners, as a panelist, you're able to mute or unmute your video at your discretion, but please mute yourself when you are not speaking to avoid background noise. If you wish to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting and haven't already done so, please raise your virtual hand now to join the speakers queue in one of two ways. For those viewing the meeting on a computer laptop or device, click on the blue hand icon. For those listening to the meeting on a phone, press star nine. We will lower hands as speakers are called upon. When the public comment begins, we will announce your name and unmute your microphone. You will have two minutes to speak, after which your microphone will again be muted. Regarding the chat Q and A function on Zoom, attendees are not able to use these features. So commissioners, we ask that you do not utilize the chat for any purpose other than technological assistance. Lastly, in accordance with the passage of H D forty-two twelve, this meeting will be recorded and posted to the Sustainability Commission website. As always, please feel free to contact the Sustainability Commission if there's testimony you were not able to provide. And with that, I turn the meeting over to Chair Mann.
Thanks, Danielle. Happy New Year, everybody. Very exciting. So first, we're gonna start with Dennis is gonna do the land acknowledgement.
Yeah, and I want to thank Laura for lifting up the notion of how do we bring it closer to home rather than simply a perfunctory acknowledgement. And what came to mind for me as a piece of my history as a child, my father was a basketball coach in a small community near Dallas Perrydale High School. And one of their most dreaded opponents every year was Shamala Indian School, who had a killer basketball team. And I grew up in Salem and I often would drive the freeway and there's the Shamala exit where the school has been located. And so I did some research and it's been there for a hundred and twenty-five years. It's the longest continuing indigenous boarding school in America. And goes back to the eighteen eighties and where it moved to its current site. And it had up to a thousand folks in the nineteen twenties who lived there. And at that point in time was expanded to twelfth grade, but before that was much younger kids. And the kind of things they taught there were blacksmithing, shoemaking, carpentry, and girls' industries. And from all the accounts I could read in history was one of those places was let's take the Indian out of that person to deconstruct their culture and embrace them in a culture and train them for survival roles. And you know, in a more predominant culture, dominant culture. And then in nineteen twenty-six, it was expanded up to twelfth grade and they dropped the lower grade level. So it was no longer kids. It was high school age students grades nine to twelve. And their current standards, they now encourage students to explore and embrace embrace their identities and talked about cultural clubs from different tribal groups. It sounds like most of their, they have folks coming from around the nation. And I looked at some additional news reports about things happening there and a couple of moving ones where there's a Veterans Powwow that was there in November. So it's a site for other cultural gatherings with indigenous communities. But one of the moving one was last Memorial Day, some folks, including people who had previously worked at the school, organized a cleanup at the cemetery because the cemetery houses is the final resting place for a hundred and seventy-five of the two hundred and fifty estimated students who died at Shamala. And the description of the condition of the cemetery at that point was a neglected space. And they held a ritual to memorialize those whose remains were there and all who had died at the school. And cleaned up the place. And I know it's a pilgrimage I tend to make. You just get off the freeway and it's apparently between the freeway and the railroad track five miles north of Salem. I want to pay homage to the site. The folks that helped organize it, as I said, were prior staff, including one John Spencer, who had been staff and is now retired as a doctor and counselor at Fort Belknap Indian Community in Montana and came out here and partnered and reached out to a couple of folks. Kevin Simmons, who's now a doctoral student in Indigenous Studies at the U of O and Valdez Bravo, who are co-chairs of the Indigenous Caucus of the Oregon Democratic Party. And just a reality check for me, I felt like when I'd heard tales about the Carlisle Indian Schools and abuses and things that had happened there, that was there. And then I went, wait a minute. It's very close to home and that reality is close to home. And now it seems from some reports I had about deaths of students that were related to there was deaths that left Shamala and went home. A very, very tenuous situation. I had the honor of being invited to go to Standing Rock in the fall of two thousand sixteen. And there was a contingent there that described how it was an escape from the high rates of drug abuse on the reservation for many of the young people that bring different kinds of meaning to their life. And Shamala was for many kids was the last resort. When they needed to leave the reservation, where can I go? And the existence of that school was that. Their substance abuse counselors and other staff have faced some difficulties in terms of the roles they're asked to fulfill. So for me doing the research and what I wanted to share with you is that the reality is the close to home. The realities are not a historic artifact and things are getting better. The growing awareness is what helped make it better. You know, it certainly has shifted in the last four years when the Secretary of Interior was an indigenous person. And there were studies that unfortunately, you know, revealed that thousands of children died in those facilities. So I think we remember and then we move forward. And again, thank you, Laura, for bringing depth to what we want to do when we acknowledge our history and our current realities. So, thank you.
Thanks. That was great. Super cool. So with the bar all high right now, we need some volunteers for the next few months to do land acknowledgement. You'd like to do one, Chris? So what month is it? It's January. So February? Okay, anyone? March?
Sure.
Very good. One more, maybe? Can we go to April? No, we can't go that far. Oh, Jan, you want to?
So just get me your, I don't need the whole report. I just need like a little bullet of if, or if you have a link.
She said she needed about as much as in the agenda, right?
Yeah, first report of Shamala Indians. So just so I can include links and stuff in the agenda, I need that a week before the meeting.
And links are nice, even just so people, you know, may be able to go on the website and click on something and maybe they'll learn something, even if it's past or whatever it is. Right. Or like a link to the school website for, I mean, could have, just for some information that someone.
The school website was kind of bureaucratic stuff, enrollment information and that thing.
I mean, just if there's something.
Yeah.
It would be great. Alrighty, so the next thing is an action item. So we need to review and approve the agenda and November meeting minutes. So I need second. Oh, you have a question. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you.
It's okay. I noticed there wasn't included in it the capture of the other city staff that were guests when presented or the consultants. Maybe like that should be added. Okay, just because it was meaningful content.
Attendees, that's right.
Yeah. And then the other element, and it's partly helps me with I knew, but it makes me think that could help with others. Especially when community members contributed comments. So we were kind of inconsistent about whether we were associating them with their organization as representative of the organization or when we weren't. And so I didn't.
In the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that was based on what they, whatever they shared in the
Okay.
meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So for some of them, they might not have been like shared.
Maybe.
So I'll make those changes. Are you comfortable?
Approving.
Voting if those changes are included?
I would certainly consider it a friendly amendment to the motion.
Thanks. So for a second.
Okay.
So all in favor? All right. Thank you. Now we'd like to do a public comment, but there any?
We do not have any public. Two that were mailed in.
Okay.
Well, for the folks who are new, we, the commission has a process when someone messages the Sustainability Commission, which is something that they can do via the website online. That message does get emailed to all of you right in real time when it happens, but the commission also has a practice of using the public comment period time to just reiterate what, what that, so that it's public record. So there were two that came in. Uh, we don't organize here. The first one was from James New. He submitted this shortly after the last meeting and overall, he wanted to thank the commission for a great input and discussion regarding the Golden Gardens Park. And thought that the points brought up by all the commissioners and staff were very well thought out and informative. He is opposed to the installation of a front rubber field, which had happened at his children, his child's school district in early two thousand. And he was against it then as well. And that's about it. Oh, he also wants rooftops of like concession stands or restrooms to be equipped with solar systems at Golden Gardens Park. And then there was also test message sent by Jennifer Volam. She was concerned about the lack of ability to recycle plastics and other items in Eugene. He said that the types of plastics that you can recycle per site is very limited, whereas other areas in Oregon have a wider array. There was, she shared that there's a company called Ridwell, Seattle-based company, which is recycling services that would like to provide their services in this market, but is unable to because of the franchise agreements that we have in our region. And so her ask was to change those franchise agreements so that businesses can create new opportunities for recycling.
This, I mean, those are still comments. Sometimes there's questions that are asked. And in the past, I don't know if you've been here for this kind of thing, but like a commissioner might volunteer to respond to a question that was asked in that kind of email submission. We've had that happen before, or you can respond. I'm just gonna ask, is there any? I feel like I appreciate the recycling one, but there's a lot of information that's out there with the Recycling Modernization Act that might make this person under, you know, understand that what's coming. And, and because it doesn't seem like in the way that she wrote it that she knows about, maybe the Recycling Modernization Act, and I didn't know. I'm kind of asking you right in this moment if it's appropriate. If a commissioner or you want to respond with something like, like, do you want more information about what's gonna happen and what's going to be picked up at the curb and what all the pollers are gonna be required to do? Or not? I mean, we could let it lie.
I, I don't have detailed information about our franchise agreements.
Right, but I'm not saying addressing that. I'm just saying maybe giving her more information or links or something that's maybe simple about the Recycling Modernization Act. Because a lot of that, it's gonna really change. And they finally put out the final list of all the things that will be picked up at the curb and the things that will not be picked up at the curb, like tinfoil. Suddenly, we can't, we can't do that anymore. But that's okay. But still, um, I don't know. Is there anyone that'd be interested in responding this person with some recycling information? Maybe someone from the Education Committee or I just feel like it's an opportunity to reach out to a member of the community with information. Yeah.
I think that we had said that it has, it should come from staff and that staff would respond to people when they wrote. That was the past.
We did, but there's been occasions when I think it was like there was someone who volunteered to reach out to someone. I don't remember what the instance was of that, or if that's, if it's a hard and fast that it's only staff. I don't know. Yes.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
I, everybody does.
The first part of what you said sounds like it may just be a simple staff response. Things are changing in Oregon because of state legislation and reference the act. Thank you for your, you know, comments. I mean, is that the kind of thing you're really looking for?
Yeah.
Might it just be that simple?
Yep. I think just acknowledging that, yeah, that's really true and it has been a problem, but there is this coming down the.
And the changes we're gonna hear more about tonight.
Right, plus that, yeah. Exactly. What did you wanna?
I just, I think it's appropriate from staff in this one.
Yeah.
Because I think that there is tiptoeing into legal franchise and some competitive market stuff. And you may have other departments or technical folks that want to be cautious about how it may accidentally and for openness to franchisee agreements or things.
It's my page. That's why you give me the printed out one. Um, all right. Well, thank you. And the next thing on the agenda is we want to welcome our new liaison and new, she's both a new liaison and a new city councillor. So it's very exciting. So please, everyone, welcome Czynski.
Thank you.
Welcome. We have a song for this. A song, no, not a song. Welcome song?
I know.
Danielle and I had a meeting and created a welcome song. No, did you wanna, did you wanna run? You're good at running lines.
Sure. Well, welcome. And maybe we could give you a minute or two to just introduce yourself. And then I thought it would be good to just do a quick round robin of introductions. Just say your name, how you've been on the commission and something a little more light, which what have we decided? If you have a hope revelation or resolution for the new year, so, and keep it brief, but you know.
Well, I am Eliza Kaczynski. I've been on Eugene City Council for approximately a week. So this is one of several committees I've been assigned to. I'm really excited about this one. I moved to Eugene over a decade ago. I have to like do math that I, I can't do off the top of my head at the moment. And immediately when I got here, started getting involved in a lot of things related to the city. The first thing I kind of did was I started attending the Active Transportation Committee, which met in this room. And apparently if you sit in the back of the room, the Active Transportation Committee for a year, they put you on the committee. So ended up starting out with the Active Transportation Committee. I did a lot of advocacy surrounding housing, particularly more dense housing that's in more walkable areas because obviously in addition to affordable housing and housing availability being a big crisis we're facing in our city, that style of development of housing is much more sustainable and friendly for the climate. So it's one of those things that has sort of a nexus between a lot of different needs that we have in our community. I joined the Eugene Budget Committee seven years ago, a little over seven and a half years ago, but they, I had to step off when, when I did this. And so I did that. And I also was on the Lake County Planning Commission for about three years for my day job, because none of those things pay. They, I worked for nonprofits, particularly in human resources and organizations. I worked for Southern Mental Health, Down and Country Growth. And I currently work for Lake County in their HR department. So that's, that's a little bit about me.
My name's Tom Kreider. I was an educator for over thirty years and I actually taught at McNary High School in Salem, which was on Shamala Road. I, I primarily taught chemistry and physics and then retired and my wife and I moved to Eugene from Wyoming of all places. And we're very happy to be in Eugene. I'm a master recycler with solar on my house. Well, I have a townhouse. And so I'm really excited in that other than January, I haven't had to pay an electrical bill at all until this, this month. So I'm really happy with my solar system that I have.
Dennis Rousey is he him pronouns and I had a thirty-year career in education and early childhood education. I administered student services childcare program at the University of Oregon and then retired in oh nine and had a late in life career for about a decade as a unitarian universalist minister. Returned to Eugene four years ago, trying to be mostly retired, but still an affiliated community minister at the local church here. And my solar array didn't build enough credits because it didn't get online till later in the summer to, you know, reduce the E web bill yet midwinter. And so, you know, I'm hoping I build more credits there as part of what I'm hoping in the next year. And I'm inspired right now to try to find some good life balance of commitment. A book I'm reading and I'm actually have created some sermons about it is a book called Rest is Resistance by Tricia Hershey, who's a, self-describes herself as a postmodern womanist theologian. And to look at those people, particularly black women who have survived four hundred years of oppression in this country on how I can make it through the next four. That's a hope for mine. Can I make it through the next four by some good balance, perseverance, striving?
Hi, my name is Mitra Gruel and I've been on the commission for about three and a half years now. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator at the Materials Exchange Center for Community Arts. I produce the fixed affairs for the city and the county. And I run a nonprofit called Biking Textile Maker Hub where we teach industrial sewing to unhoused folks and have an industrial sewing maker, makerspace. I have five jobs. Sorry, it takes me a while to get through this. I also do alterations and repairs. Leather work is one of my favorites and on clothing and textiles and have my own business where I do education in upcycled fashion. I'm a master recycler and my resolution this year is to get more work-life balance and spend more time with my family, friends and myself in nature particularly.
Rest is resistance.
I'll look that up then. Thank you. Okay.
I'm Laura Allen. This is my fifth year on the commission. I was a teacher for ten years, a long time ago, and I I also work with a nonprofit, Do Mother Conservation and Reuse, and I'm also a science writer.
My name's Chris Shorkis. This is my third year. Spent time actually teaching business at Northwest Christian University for a while. And currently have an insurance agency and then I'm the head track coach and cross-country coach at Lake Community College. And some people follow up more about some of this stuff than I did about the goals or anything. I am working on being in the moment. So sometimes I give talks at colleges and things like that and I don't always practice what I preach. So I think it's important in life. Sometimes we're all, everybody here is like very busy. Like sometimes it's very easy when you're busy and you're goal oriented. You're always looking at trying to get to the goal or get to the destination. And I think we forget that life really is journey. It's not the destination, because when you get to that ultimate destination, it's kind of over. So we need to be enjoying the journey. And sometimes it's the small things in life like going walking on the beach with your daughter. That is the moment. And so keeping that in mind and just enjoying sometimes the simple things in life instead of waiting until.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lily and I'm a junior at South Eugene High School. I've been on the commission since November of twenty twenty-three, so a little over a year now. Let's see. I'm really interested in, I guess, policy, you know, civics and the climate and disaster preparedness. I serve as the co-chair of the FEMA Region Ten Youth Preparedness Council. And I'm also a member of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. Twenty twenty-five is the year I'm going to turn eighteen. It's the year I'm going to enter my senior year of high school. So I guess I'm excited to enjoy my last year before I'm a legal adult. Yeah, I hope I can learn, grow, and I'm excited for the future after high school as well.
I'm John Fisher. I've been on for three months. So I'm just learning the ropes and I'm a master recycler and composter and all those things. And I hope it snows again soon. I want to go over steam.
Hi, I'm Jan Bowman. I've been on the commission for about three and a half years. I had most of my career working for the city of Eugene, about thirty-six years in a variety of different situations throughout the city, a lot in funding and development and then in the city manager's office. And I've been retired a few years after retirement or just about the end. When I'm working, I started getting more involved with some community organizations related to climate and some things. So I've been kind of use that. We were a long time family of people into the outdoors, particularly river stuff. And so we have that, that way of being concerned about our world and, and nature. And we were early solar adopters, in fact, so early that the company, the solar collector only worked for a couple of years and and the company went out of business. And so that wasn't too great. So we actually need to update that. But I've enjoyed my time on the commission so far.
I'm Alexi Miller. I've been on this commission a year and some months. I grew up here in Eugene. These days I'm Director of Building Innovation at a nonprofit called New Buildings Institute, which is a building decarbonization research organization. So in the world of emerging tech and building decarb, solar panels are really cool. I really like heat pump water heaters. That's my thing. They're, they're great. I put one in my mother-in-law's basement. She calls it her space joke. She's complete. And I actually, one of my parents is going deaf. And so right before this passed, it was a thirty-minute overlap that I'm missing thirty minutes of my ASL course. So I'm making ASL learning. My focus is here is, is that kind of learning to have that personal accessibility and just be able to participate with that slices of our work.
Thank you. My name is Devin Mann and I've been on the commission, I think, two and a half years around there, right? How long have you been on? You're kind of the same. Yeah, okay, two years then and then maybe a month. And I'm a Eugene native and I went to South Eugene High School in U of O. And now, right now, I'm teaching a course completely online, which I've never done before. And it's asynchronous as well in marine ecology at OSU. So I'm a duck, so I'm not telling them that that. Um, and they don't ask. So that's good. Um, uh, yeah, so I've been a biology instructor, a researcher. I've taught Montessori middle school biology. I've taught AP biology. I've taught biology, ecology at U of O. So I have like this breadth of, I'm wearing lots and lots of hats and now I'm mostly just a professional volunteer. And every year I have the same New Year's resolution for like the last thirty-five years, which is I overreact to everything. Like I hope that I will do that this year as I did last year. Like I hope that I will do that this year as I did last year.
You hope that you'll overreact to everything.
That I will overreact to everything. Yeah. That's always my New Year's resolution.
Do you accomplish it every year?
Pretty much.
I'm. I'm Danielle. I'm actually not a member of the commission, but I'm the staff liaison for this body. Um, and yeah, this is part of my job and the climate panel is for the city. Um. And I've been in this role about a year, almost years, I guess.
Any hopes for the future?
Um, I just have some good quality time with my kids, two and four-year-olds. Like very sweeting right now, so yeah, it's a good time with my kids.
Sure. Um, Courtney Graceall. Uh, I have been on this commission. Uh, everybody else measured in years except us for one and a quarter meetings. I work for Sea Pacific Industries, so we're products manufacturing and forestry. Um, I am a duck followed by a zag. Um, so public policy planning and management was my degree in organizational health from um from Zaka. And I think um. Really for me in the same theme, we have about a decade difference. I have a um teenager who's moving towards that phase of life where he. It's not going to need me much longer. Um, he won't be required to be in my presence. He needs me much longer. So I think my revelation for the next couple of years is to slow things down a little bit and be a little calm and quiet and um very present. With him before he gets the driver's license and this like see ya. So balance.
Great. Thank you, everyone. That was good. Um, I'll always appreciate like a refresher on of what everyone's done and. I don't know, I can't remember it all the time, so it's nice to hear again. I think it's great for new people to to hear. Because we don't really have a formal situation where we do that. Um. So next, we're going to have um our presentation about. The clerk, okay, formerly known as IMER. So if we could start instead of always calling it the IMER, we can call it the clerk now.
Is that what it's being officially called?
I don't know. It's that's the.
That's our first question to you.
Don't be the hardest. It's the hardest question. Actually, what? Good acronym.
So we've got Jeff Orlandini here from Lane County.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Yeah, actually, one of your uh Eugene staff, I was on a call right after we changed the name and she said clerk for a couple times. I don't, what are you saying? It's like, what is this word? She's like, that's the acronym. Like, oh, it is. So you did not think about that when we changed the name. Um, although the hope is kind of that uh potentially Clean Lane as like a brand might be able to become. Inclusive of other things, so it could be like a research recovery facility. There could be other initiatives. It would come under that, so. Um, yes, so that's the first answer and the easiest one. So we'll get right into this. Um, and yeah, and I'm Jeff Orlandini. I've been with the county a little over ten years. All of that time has been in waste management. Um, started as a supervisor for the folks that are in the fee booths and um screen loads and then have been in this position since twenty eighteen. Um, and so a- as the manager of the division and so we've been working on. This project for quite a long time. It's part of our solid waste management plan. So I think I uh some of you were here when I presented a couple of years ago with Bullcandling and. We went over a little more of the history, how we got here. Uh, we won't focus on that a lot tonight. We'll talk about what this will do, but essentially we've been um, we were tasked with studying. Processing waste and really a lot of uh focus on organics in our last solid waste management plan because. Organics make up about a third of our total waste stream still. With about half being food waste and half being other organic materials, so even with curbside um composting essentially with the addition of food. Uh, we we haven't seen um a tremendous decrease in that. Uh, we'll get those official numbers on our new waste composition study should be coming out uh before June this year. Do you just uh started up their study last year? We worked with the city to get um additional samples to really dig into the organics issue, so. This is a a pretty broad overview. Tonight I tried to get at some of the questions that this body had and. Again, we'll have a discussion at the end. If I if I don't answer all your questions, I'd love to take more. So. As you can see, you know, really it's a state-of-the-art waste processing facility. Bullcandling Systems is a local company. They don't have a facility, full-fledged facility locally. Um, they have facilities in other parts of the country and other parts of the world. And so excited that they were the winner um in terms of who was selected for this and that we could have a showcase facility right here in our in our own backyard. And so there are a. When we were looking at this, we as the county were really concerned with the waste and with getting our recovery rate to that sixty-three percent. That's our goal as a community um that the county set was to get to sixty-three percent. We're about fifty-two, fifty-three percent right now, highest in the state. Which is really great. Um, some people say we're the highest, we're doing the best. Why are we trying to do more? And we're kind of like, well. If my forerunner gets seventeen miles in the gallon and it's the best. You know, in my household, it doesn't mean I really shouldn't try to get something that maybe does a little better. Um, so you know, we kind of feel like we're not real happy with with just saying, well, because. We lead everyone else in the state, we should kind of rest on it. We really feel like we can do better and that there's technology that gets us there. Also would say that as an organization, as a division. Well, I love the master recycling program because those are the folks that can get out there on the ground and make all those changes, like, you know, what can we do with this one material? This one item for us as division, we have to look at big. One change we can make that has a big impact and that's why we focus so much on um organics. I would say that the other thing. We'd really want to focus on next might be construction demolition and what we do with those types of materials, uh, because that's another large portion of the waste stream. So this um shows you the key features. That bullet point about the curbside services, one mandate we had when we put this RFP out. Was that we could not change the curbside pickup. Um, yes, it's possible to add another bin. It's possible to add twenty more bins. Um, it's possible to do one bin. They do like someplace in California, everything goes in one bin. They take it to a facility and they just kind of, you know, uh. Separate it out again, but we don't control as the county um what each city does and how they collect and so we can't. Tell City of Eugene, you need to put a fourth bin out there. We want to, you know, change what we do. So that was one uh major component of this. Um, and then, you know, we'll talk about the anaerobic digester in a minute. So this is the kind of the key terms of this public-private partnership. So again, it's. Um, the county is going to own the land. We'll own um all of the buildings except for the gas generating portion. Um, for the first five years and we'll lease that building out to Bullcandling's LLC that will operate the facility. And so we um, that's not something we're specialists in 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 running these types of facilities. Um, it also gives us an opportunity that if for some reason the equipment works, but the operators don't. Um, and the the contract has to be void, we then have some options on um what we could do to to bring somebody else in or not. Um, and so the it has a twenty-five-year term. Uh, essentially that twenty-five years we're paying back through our tip fees that we pay to the company to process. Um, paying back the loan on that equipment, right? So a a pretty standard um agreement. Provided they meet minimum diversion standards. If they can't meet those standards, the equipment doesn't work, we're not obligated to buy that equipment or to to maintain this contract. Um, and then in terms of, you know, like the city of Eugene, you know, everything the city stays the same. The city already kind of. Tells haulers, um, you know, the situation in terms of where they they bring materials and they choose to go somewhere else, what what that means through um their agreements. So there's no um change to the. Current agreement for the city um or to curb site services. So the landfill life, so we are very lucky on one hand to have a landfill that has seventy years currently of life on it. Um. This will add nearly, you know, a good generation or more of life to that landfill. Um, I would say that in terms of people that might resist it, some people, they say we have seventy years, we shouldn't be worrying about this right now. Right? Worry about that in fifty, sixty years. Um, and what we're learning from some of our neighbors is that when they have a landfill that has fourteen years of life left on it. Um, there's a big gulp and a big, you know, how, what are we going to do in fourteen years? It's not a lot, a lot of time. And because our neighbors, um both north and south are going to be having landfills that close in the next. Five in summer, five to fifteen years. Um, there's going to be over a million tons of waste that's looking for a home. Um, and it won't be here. Uh, we bring in about three hundred thousand tons of waste every year. We're not looking at trying to to triple or quadruple the amount of waste we we take in. But certainly people are going to be knocking on our doors saying, you know, we're one of your neighbors. Can we bring waste from our community there? And. I don't know what those decisions will be there. I know that I'd feel a lot better about taking waste if I know that half of it's not going to go in my landfill, that half of it would go to a facility. Uh, or all of it would go to a facility that's going to divert half of it from the landfill. I would feel a little better about taking. Waste in if it's not a one-to-one into the landfill. That's what the facility is um has has said they can do is it's a fifty percent diversion rate. So every hundred tons that goes in the facility, fifty don't end up in the landfill. So um. You know, again, that seventy years is if we do everything the way we do now. Um, we know that there's going to be some decisions to make in the very near future about waste in this region. Um, I will add that Marion County has um or Benton County rather has um assembled a a group that is looking at regional waste management practices. Saying, you know, we got to stop looking at maybe each little individual community, look at what we do as a region. And so um, you know, and I'm I'm part of that stakeholder group and excited to to look at it that way and kind of, you know, get together and kind of look at what we can do. Uh, the last bullet point there, we do have to, we're legally required to have closure and post-closure costs set aside for the landfill. So if we had to close Shortmount landfill tomorrow, we need to have money in there that we could. Do final closure, then monitor that landfill for thirty years. So you're required to have that. Um, so the longer we extend the life of landfill, the lower amount of money we have to have kind of sitting there for that. We also have to have development cost to build the next landfill cell. Um, the current cell we're in costs us upwards of about eighteen million dollars um to build and that was slated to get us about twelve years. Right? So we're talking somewhere in the one and a half million per year just to have a landfill. So extending that life means that we're not so aggressively building more landfill at at Shortmount. Um, greenhouse gas reductions. So this shows you what um the reductions would be. And uh most of this is because of the fact that we can capture these organics before they enter the landfill. We can put them in an anaerobic digester. It's a much quicker process to extract that methane. Um, and then put that methane on the natural gas pipeline as opposed to the normal landfill environment. Right? Where we know that we have fugitive emissions right off the bat. Soon as you start um putting that that waste in the landfill. Um, we cover the landfill every day by by rule. We're we're regulated to have to do that. So you know, you're starting the anaerobic um process pretty quickly. Uh, by putting, you know, either soil or um even tarps, but then more waste on top of it. And so there's a lot of before anybody can pull and extract any of that methane out, there's fugitive emissions that are already going off. Um, and then we'll talk a little bit about our current system and compare that to AD. Um, and then. On the last point, we're really talking about recyclables. So recyclables now are um, you know. We we co-mingle them. They then go typically majority of those go to EcoSort. EcoSort kind of takes off the high-value material, so they they dump it on their floor. They take off the cardboard mainly, the the high-value material. They then reload that onto vehicles. And ship that out of the the county to go to another material uh facility plant, which then unloads it a a second time. And then they separate all the material out into all those marketable streams. This facility would allow us to take all of those uh vehicles that go to our curb, straight to this facility, dump it once. We do what they do typically in Portland or Salem, um and separate all those materials and send them to market right from here. And so um, you know, from that climate standpoint and the miles and the and all the vehicles you're cutting down tremendously. By having a um a recycling, a state-of-the-art recycling uh facility right here. And um. Bullcandling believes they could actually even um independent of RMA, potentially collect more materials. Based on the markets they believe that they could um access for for some things like plastics. Um, and so that, you know, there could be a potential that we could add some of those materials back in. Uh, folks are aware that EPUD was um pretty vocal about being against the project and as well they should. Um, their business is electricity. They um are a utility that provides electric power um for their customers and so. If your business is electricity to to give to customers, any threat to that would would be something that you wouldn't be really excited about. Um, and I think the main disappointment for them came from the fact that eventually they're going to see lower. Potential quantities of gas that they could access because we'll be using anaerobic digestion before it gets to a landfill and so some of that is the penciling out of. Investment that they would put in with decreasing quantities of gas. Um, as we get into it, you'll see the chart that they gave us. It shows you the investment in the green. That they put in annually. Um, so on the right you have the the amount of money they put in. The the left one shows you the percent of gas that they were able to capture and that's. Capturable gas for them. So we don't knock them for not being able to capture fugitive emissions before it's able to be put into one of your wells, because that's. That's the nature of a normal landfill. Um, EPUD, I would say, if I was to to judge historically. Was doing average maybe below in terms of capture. They're doing a great job right now. They've really invested a lot of money the last few years. Um, they're getting, as you can see, close to a a seventy percent capture rate. So of all the gas available to them to capture, they're capturing between, you know, the sixty-five and seventy percent right now. Um, so they're doing a really good job. A state-of-the-art system like theirs. If you were to build a brand new and put a ton of money into it, eighty-five percent is probably about as good as you're getting. Anything beyond that and you're drunk dropping in so much money that there's no really return on investment for it. So I would say that, you know, they're they're in um currently on, you know, probably towards the higher end of, you know, their capture rate. And so that's. Fantastic. Um, you know, for the system, if if you know, we're happy with with that being the reality and again. There's really not much you can fault. I mean, there's only so much you can do on a traditional landfill gas capture. Um, system because of the nature of landfills and how that gas is created. Um, it is equivalent, they're powered about twelve hundred um homes. It's somewhere in the two or three to five percent of their total under portfolio is uh the generation of the landfill. Um, they've got about seven hundred fifty industrial accounts, twenty thousand residential accounts and twenty-three hundred commercial customers. So um, you know, the big negative for them would be if they no longer are going to use this gas for electricity, then they would have to purchase that from Bonneville. Um, which uh, you know, takes away some of their green, probably the credit they get for having the the green power. Um, and so again, you know. That's a decision we have to make. When we compare that to anaerobic. You know, it's it's well over ninety percent is the capture rate. Um, we had uh Parametrics, used to be a good company, um did a study and and looked at the efficiency of anaerobic. And all of your uh, the reason it's not a hundred percent, a a lot of that would be a fugitive emissions from just the gas pipeline that you put it on. Um, and a little bit within just, you know, the system itself, so. Right off the bat, we're going from a sixty-five to seventy percent capture rate to an over ninety percent capture rate on the gas. Um, you know, you clean up the gas, you put on the natural gas pipeline. Um, it would not be used locally when we start out. That would be placed on a pipeline and whomever is the purchaser of that gas. Um, would be, you know, putting that on a pipeline that's that's going out of the community to start. Um, the hope is that in the future, if there's a a demand, say LTD gets buses that could run off of. That gas that um, you know, we could maybe use it locally, which would be a really great clean room system. Um, and we would also need to continue to collect at the at the landfill the way we currently do. It takes a long time for methane to stop being produced in a landfill environment. There's going to be a gas produced for a very long time. Um, some say that it can take, you know, seven years after you place something in in the landfill for it to really reach its meet uh peak. Uh, gas production, so you know, and we're not eliminating a hundred percent of the organics from from the waste stream at the landfill, so. We will run um both of those systems. We will just see a drop in the potential gas at the at the one that um is being collected to landfill. Um. And the last thing I would say, because I know EPUD was a a a highlight or some of the questions folks had. They just closed an RFP, so they're actually now looking at decommissioning their electric producing engines. And hiring a third party to uh pull that gas off and put on the the natural gas pipeline themselves. Um, and so that's an interesting connection too, you know, more than likely you would connect those two facilities up. Um, to that pipeline. And so I know they're they're looking at that um as well. Um, and then lastly, our um our rate impacts. And so this is a really, you know, difficult. Wanted to to get exacts on. So the top point there shows you what the impact is at the landfill. So the caveat is at three percent of it. So eleven, eleven, nine and nine, that's year one, two, three and four. We're currently in year one, that started in July. So we did our eleven percent fee increase in July one, twenty twenty-four. Uh, three percent of that was just what we said, we would normally come to you with a three percent increase for CPI. Probably would have been five point six percent or five point seven. That's like the consumer price index comic inflation, yeah. Right, so. You know, I know it's closer to five and a half percent, but we we said three percent of that. Um, we did across the board on our fees just for our normal, what we would need to do. And then the um eight percent was for this facility. And so we. Approve, our board approved eleven percent for the first two years. They have not approved years three and four. We'll see where we're at when we get there, um if those could be lower. And that does not mean that that's what we see at the curve, right? Eleven percent, the landfill doesn't mean eleven percent to me at the curve. Um, uh, what we have realized is typically we look at a community like Eugene Springfield, about twenty percent of your garbage bill will be in the landfill tip fee. Um, which which would make sense, right? Because most of your bills gonna be the person that's driving that truck. Um, the truck itself and the fuel to to get it there and their operations, right? So it's about twenty percent is what we look at the impact from the landfill fee. Um, we estimated that initially um to be fifty to sixty sixty cents per month um each year. So that could be, you know, if we took the high end of that and said sixty cents per month. And after four years, you know, that would be the the two dollars and forty cents a month this would have on our bill per month. Um, after the four years, it is a difficult um in talking even with with folks Eugene, it's, you know, the these. Uh, percentages sometimes move a a little bit based on prices of diesel and stuff, but um. This was what we estimated, I believe that the the rates in in Eugene, I know, I know for me, I think it was somewhere. Um, closer to ninety-four cents all in, might have been around what the the increase was. Um, inclusive of this and and other um other things. Those other elements of the fee. And then on commercial, this is a really difficult one. I mean, you know, you've got a restaurant, it's a commercial account. And so is a a high school, you know, um and so there there's a a big variety in terms of that commercial. Um, and but it definitely impacts the rates. And that's probably, you know, the largest pushback we had. From the haulers, we did a hauler meeting before the vote, and really it was. The way that these franchise agreements um in their eyes uh are done in a few of the cities. It was that our rate increases came in in uh July, and that's not when they had their rates reviewed by their cities. Um, and so they were like, we're we're absorbing these increases until we're allowed to raise our rates. And so um, and that's more difficult, the smaller of a company that you are. And so um, one thing that multiple cities did was they said, we will pass through that, will allow haulers to do that raise day one. Um, and so City of Florence called us and they said, okay, what does that rate impact? Okay, because we wanna go and let our haulers do that. Um, I believe City of Eugene did the same thing. And so that was the complaint we received when we had a meeting from the haulers. Um, the complaints that we've seen from the hauler group that's been formed. Um, there's a local hauler group that was formed. Um. Yeah, I'm I'm still not real clear um beyond the 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 rate, what the the pushback is. Um, some of it was that recycle were number one in recycling, and so why are we doing more that it's expensive to do this? Um, and that haulers themselves are the reason why we have a good um rate. Uh, in terms of diversion rate and that they should just be allowed to kind of identify those things on their own. You know, I I would push back a little bit saying DQ requires what we have to do um based on city population. So haulers don't really, I mean, they might be able to choose this material or that, but. You know, um, there is, you know, some of that regulation is what has created the diversion rates that we get. Um, you know, and so uh I do think that there's a little bit of a balance there. But I can't really um explain the, you know, what the push is from individual haulers. Because the feedback that we received was really about the rates and them not being able to absorb them. And um, the the biggest cities seem to have taken care of that. And so um. Yeah, I'm I'm not certain what um their their pushback is um and haven't heard a lot from them. I've heard from some haulers that they're like, we support the project. Um, as long as we're able to push those those fees through so that we're not absorbing the the increases. So um, I think it probably depends on a hauler.
Um, quick question?
Yeah.
After is knowing that what happens five years out is a little hard to say. Um, those pay for the cost, the rate, the tipping tip fee increases pay for the cost of the facility.
Yep.
Um, and does that then stick at? Or like there's, then you would go back to CPI adjustment as a baseline there.
Yeah, yeah. What it models out to is that, you know, at that point, your your rate is caught up enough. That, yeah, you're able to do the CPI increases at that point. Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, and you know, we have some of the lowest rates in the state. I don't know that that makes people feel better. You know, they're like, great, let's keep the lowest rates, right? So that, I mean, you know, but um certainly this brings us up in line with some of our neighbors. Um, you know, not necessarily higher, but definitely, you know, more in line with it. Um, and I do think there's gonna be opportunity to look at taking waste from out of the county. That, you know, then goes to this facility and helps defray some of the costs that that we do um locally. Um, and then the only other thing on like pushback is I do know that our largest waste hauler. In in Lane County is also owned by the third or fourth largest um. Waste management company in North America. And they also purchased a recycle facility in Portland, they purchased a landfill down south of us. The hauling system there, they purchased the hauler in Florence. So I do think there might be some pushback from them around. They've kind of created their own version of a closed loop system. And maybe would rather not take recyclables here if they own a facility somewhere else. Um, you know, I I. Again, I I don't know, um, that, you know, we we don't have those in-depth conversations often um with with their businesses. But um certainly, you know, the the way that it's it's going right now does seem to benefit certain um companies in terms of, you know, having a little bit of the the control of the system.
Well, I mean, if you have like something really specific or you can write it down, we have a lot of time for question and answer.
Yeah.
Um, and I think you might be wanting. Right, yeah.
And we're there.
Okay, that's what I was saying, I was saying, I think he's done.
Yes. Thanks.
So. Who is the company that owns all the things you just said?
Um, so EcoSort is our local um. I don't know what they would call it, call it reload facility. They're not a a full-blown material recovery facility because they high grade. You know, one product and they just reload and bring up. So that's, and Sandy Pack and EcoSort are both owned by Waste Connections.
Waste Connection.
Yeah, Waste Connections, yeah. And they, I believe, just purchased a um material recycle facility up in the Portland area. Um, that, you know, they would haul their recyclables too. Um, and most, we have them and IP as the two local folks that can kind of take recyclables and and do the same thing and then. Um, ship them out. And so they kind of have that market, yeah.
Um, we had that question at the beginning about, you know, the Ridwell box. There's the local analog to that is Santa Fe Recycle Plus, which is the the front porch box with, you know. Number five plastic and shoes and batteries and such.
Yeah.
Is that, uh, just out of curiosity, are those materials going to that Portland facility?
I don't know where their materials are going. There's been an interesting and not to geek out too much, right? So a lot of what happened in the Portland area when the the China Sword happened in twenty seventeen. Was that a lot of communities said, we're not gonna stop taking what we take and they warehouse it. So they didn't have a market for them, so that we stopped collecting materials locally, right? And they couldn't find a market for those materials anyway, but they thought this might be a temporary bump, let's not change behavior. So they were warehousing a lot of that. So I don't know what they're doing with those. I would assume that um. They do have a market for them. The reason they do that kind of boutique style is it is more expensive to um probably separate it out from a co-mingle environment. So if they get it kind of, you know, separated by you and sent, and then they might have to send it farther away. And so it costs more, which is why they do it that way. Well, Kennedy Systems believes they could add a lot of those materials in because they do think that with the quantities you could get. And the state of the art equipment that's able to separate that out, that there are markets for um a lot of those materials. Uh, a- and that the RMA will help with creating some of those markets because of the funding that'll come with it.
You're mentioning ninety percent of the gas will get captured. Does that imply that ninety percent of the organics will get captured out of the stream? And and then a second part, if people think they're gonna get captured, will they throw them in?
Right.
Now, when they are currently.
Right. Yeah, it's a great question, you know, um. That there is a, there has been evidence that even when you say like in Eugene, hey, now you can put all your food waste in. With your degree, people don't feel as guilty about throwing food away, so you will see an increase in food waste. Because like, oh, it's going to compost, that's great. I don't need to eat apple. Um, there could be that people do that. What we're finding is that often people are choosing not to put their food waste into that. Uh, that bin uh that goes to compost because it sits for two weeks. And a lot of people don't like that. So I think that might be part of why, or it may just be an education thing, I'm not sure. I don't know, we certainly like to say compost is number one, and that's, you know, EPA's come out and said that, like, that's better. If all the food waste could go to compost, that's the the highest value. Um, so we we hope people wouldn't choose to stop. Putting in the compost bin because, you know, it's going there. Um, I also hope that people don't throw more food away. Because they think, well, great, we're, you know, put on natural gas pipeline, but there has been evidence that that sometimes um does happen. And we certainly. What we've heard from some of the composters is that, you know. They wouldn't mind having less food waste with with some of their stuff based on some of the issues that they have with that as well. Um, I also think you're gonna find PFOS in the future becoming a big issue. Um, with food waste and um some of the plastic labels that get stuck on them and the quality of compost. And the last thing I would say is yes, ninety percent of it is is the gas. Um, it does have a digestate that comes out the other end, and it's a slurry essentially. That they then dry out. And there's two things you can do with that. One is you can pay millions of dollars to clean it up and try to sell it as a compost. Which we don't wanna do. We don't have a compost problem in our community. We have two really great composters that more than they can handle. Um, but what you use, you dry it out and we use it as a daily cover at the landfill. But it doesn't have, um, I mean, has a little bit of um organic compound left. But it's a, it's pretty much devoid of of anything that would be hugely beneficial as well, cuz you've extracted all that gas out. And so we use it at the landfill. Yeah.
Yeah, there um, I appreciate you coming in and talking through it. Um, a lot of nuance, a lot of technical detail, a lot of it, as you were talking through it, it was sort of like. We're not quite sure, or there's elements of the stream that are not fully known. Um. What would I, from a kind of a past career life, when this project first emerged. The the project comparisons like the other projects similar to this, and there aren't very many, have been very vulnerable, if not. I think some of them haven't penciled.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so the question I have, there's a lot of uncertainty in kind of the hope for what it can do. Or if we even, if there's even anybody that will buy the gas, what? What happens if the project doesn't perform?
Right.
And and you know, what is that vulnerability window? Are we talking like the other facility they had that was like? Two years or, but.
I don't know that, which uh.
I think it was like a similar solid waste processing in like Montgomery or it was.
Oh, yeah, so I, what we did with the contract was we were very sure to put in place that if it doesn't perform. Then the company leaves and then we work with the bank who financed the equipment to say. Do you want to get somebody else in here to use this, or do you wanna give up? Because the equipment doesn't work. So what we do is we have the option to purchase or not. And the reason we have the option. Is that if the equipments, we feel the equipment does what it's supposed to do, and we have another operator that can come and operate, we wanna have, we wanna reserve the right to do that. If it's not, and we don't feel that, and this is something that's relatively rare in these agreements, was the ability to say, w- we are paying for it. Take your choice and go home. That's, that's one of the things that we have found in a lot of the other facilities is not built into it. It's, hey, we're guaranteeing this, it's gonna work, we'll come in and try to fix it, fix it, fix it, fix it. And you're painting, you're painting, and it's not doing what it said you had to do, but you're all the hook to pay for it. So that's what would happen in the case that they can't get that to work. Now, the gas and things like that, yeah, I mean, that would be if they don't get their revenue from that, if they're not getting the revenue from the recyclables, you know, then that could. Potentially negatively impact, you know, we've been very conservative and what we estimate we would get for our cost share. On those, because we don't wanna overpromise that they're gonna get all all this money, right? Because that is impacting, you know, what our rate is. And so we feel pretty confident. That if it, I mean, if it doesn't, I feel very confident if it doesn't work, that that's on them and then we have an empty building. You know, which is the negative, like we have a nice fancy shell of a building that we figure out what to do with. Um, but.
But our rate payers, we still kind of have to pay.
Not if it does.
Resolved, I mean.
Um, yeah, so it has, you know, there are all these provisions around, you know, what they pay for kind of like LDs based on it's not working. And we have, you know, this this many days to fix it. And then if it doesn't work, okay, you can, you you know, we're not gonna pay for you, the feedstock until you get it fixed. So there's all those provisions in there while that while that happens. But yes, if it doesn't work and it fails, then we're just not sending waste there anymore and we're going to to Shortmountain. Um, it's not impacting the rate payers. Um, yeah, and it is a. You know, I think that it's more, what I saw when I went to California, saw multiple facilities. The ones I saw that typically weren't working the best were, and I'm not, you know, this is anecdotal, so I'm not trying, but were privately owned and run. And basically they were making enough money off the tons coming in to pay the contamination fees. So what was happening was the companies that were running these facilities were saying, we're not meeting diversion guarantees, but there's no. Penalty beyond, we pay you a monthly, sorry, we didn't do good enough fee, but they could pay those fees cuz they were making enough revenue coming in. So there wasn't a motivation to meet a minimum diversion guarantee. Because they were making enough, they kept bringing in, you know, the waste. And so for us, we said, you don't need it. We're out, there's no, I gotta do that for ten years and we're paying for the facility. Um, so that was a major thing that I saw. And when we saw ones that were public-private partnerships, they were tended to be a little cleaner. And um run more efficiently. So, but yeah, I mean, it's um, there are no guarantees of anything that, you know. Of this nature, but um we feel really good too about the recycle side because of the RMA. And I think the, what we're seeing with um extended producer responsibility.
I had a question, um, kind of harkening back to John's question is like, so. Do you, does the county have a plan to, is or is there funds set aside to educate the community on like? What, you know, what the changes are and, you know, what not to do?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, like, please, you know, um, or is that, are you leaving that up to the haulers or is it combination or?
It's a combination. We have a pretty robust budget every year for outreach and education. So we would divert that to this when this facility comes online. There's also funds that are coming from RMA. Um, from that that bill that that pay to provide education for RMA as well, so you can combine that into there. I say it's a combination because in City of Springfield, for example, they're haul, they have one hauler, right? They do a single franchise agreement and they're basically their waste authority. So they do all the, you know, Sandy Pack does all their outreach and education. They, we we talk to them, they report what they do. We don't really talk to the city because they don't have staff that really do that. So, you know, if we're working with, you know, say, City of Cottage Grove, we provide a lot of resources and help to try to say, hey, we'll get that education out there, work with you on that. With Springfield, you know, we'll work with Sandy Pack, say, okay, are you getting all that education out there? So it kind of depends on the community. But we have a a pretty robust budget that we could move over that, yeah. And start with kids, cuz they tell their parents and then we see change. Honestly, sixth graders, that's who we need to.
Can you talk about the, I assume there are renewable energy credits that come from producing RNG?
Yeah.
All natural gas. Can you talk about who gets those? Do they count any or they retained and retired and what?
Yeah, so I can't talk real deep on them. That's um bulk handling would is owning and operating that and they, that's their agreement. So part of the the uniqueness of this was that because we went with the waste stream and getting. So part of the the uniqueness of this was that because we went with the waste stream and getting a diversion rate. And when RFP was really about the garbage processing, and they said, you know, we're gonna build this big processor for garbage, we'd also like to prove, you know, build a. A traditional MRF for recyclables. So we said, well, that that's on you. Because that's not, you know, w- we don't really control that waste stream at all. There's no mechanism to say where was up to go. So we said, you know, if you're gonna do that, it's on you. So they. Will get those credits, they'll manage those credits, they'll broker those credits, so they'll do the deal with the the gas uptake, and then we have. Um, a provision for kind of like a host fee. For them to run that facility that they pay us every year. And then after um five million in revenue, I believe it is. Then we get a twenty-five percent share of revenue off of that. Yeah.
Um, before I call on you, I just want to be sure, like, there's sort of a dominating force on this side of the table, and I want to make sure that. As anyone else have questions or thinking about that too before I call important again. No, not right now. All right, just thought I would throw it out there. Go ahead.
That building on that question a little bit, if. They, if they're unable to find a purchaser of the gas, does that make? The primary project of the the waste processing part of it? Is that put that at risk? Or are you dependent on them finding a purchaser of the gas?
No, I would say we're only dependent in that we would love for them to find one and make five million dollars profit so that we could get a cost share. Yeah, but um but other than that. The issue becomes if they can't find a place for the gas, what are they gonna do with it? If they don't have something for the gas, are they gonna meet a minimum diversion guarantee? Because they need to continue to process waste. So they're on the hook to find that and you get it offloaded because. They can't just not do anything with the gas because that's, you know, a key to it, and then they're not per- performing, and then we hold them accountable without performing. And so um. Yes, I mean, I I guess, you know, we've mitigated that risk through the fact that, you know, that has to be going somewhere in order for them to continue processing waste. And immediately their their diversion guarantee.
Dennis?
Yeah, um, following up on that sense of, you know, the use of RNG, you mentioned. The notion of the hope that there would be more local use. Any notions of what would incentivize that? Um, LTD would be the big user, school districts would be big user. Or is that kind of takes significant funding from other outside sources?
Uh, I I don't know about the funding. I think the last time I looked a couple of years when when LTD was kind of looking at their. Portfolio and their plans for the future, I thought they assumed it was ten years off. Something like that to be able to get those, you know, the concern right now is how far can that bus travel before it needs to refuel and a fast refuel all night? You know, um, you know, you know, how does that pencil out? So I in, I believe they're probably the biggest. Potential to be able to say, wow, if you have a fleet of buses that runs off that, then we can, you know, um. And it all ties into if we get the wastewater line that goes from Goshen. So that they can have um wastewater, you put another line in next to it, you know, that was the the goal, like when we build this line, let's put another line in that could potentially. Take a right turn to LTD. Um, but yeah, I and I don't know, I haven't heard about a lot of other. Um. Industries or, you know, organizations that are looking at using that, you know, I do like the idea of the school bus. I mean, we even thought about our own vehicles, right? Our transport. Um, and could those go natural gas? You know, we're currently debating electric, and so it's, you know, um, which way to go.
UFO is gonna be burning gas in their central plant for some time to come.
True, yeah.
They are largest point source in their greenhouse gas.
So is it franchise agreements that are preventing you from having a market for the RNG? And doesn't Northwest Natural, they've they've got a lot of publicity about how they're gonna be all RNG. Don't they want it?
Um, I, you know, I don't, I think they would take it. I don't know if they want it for the price that maybe folks want to. You know, I know EPA talked to Northwest Natural be- before we did this project, they were debating it, and I don't know. You know, they were gonna get what they wanted. I I know there's at least one other company that um has gas on that pipeline. I'm not sure. Who it is, it's Northwest Naturals Pipeline, so it's their connection. And then, you know, it's kind of like, who do you broker with to to do the uptake? But I think they would be interested. Um, and again, it's not something that we've gotten into because it's not our our responsibility.
But you're impacted by that.
What's that?
You're impacted by it. It plays into the performance.
Right, yeah, yeah. And luckily, like I said, it's a um.
And the communities.
It's a small, yeah, it's a small portion of of that. So that's nice, but I mean, you're right, it it's the domino of if it's that and this and that. That could have a bigger impact. And you know, I mean, the. I think as we've gone through it, have felt confident with both handling and them understanding these markets and knowing, you know, um. You know, how they can broker those deals and and that influence, but but you're right, it's not our our point of expertise and. You know, it's it's hoping they can do what they're promising.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
This may be a cover of me, but just looking at their investment, roughly that's on here on what you'd sent out the fifteen million for that. And a little bit digester and building, and then the hundred million for equipment. Have have you guys been privy? I mean, they don't have to tell you, but you guys privy all to. What it looks like for them to be generating the revenue? To be able to invest that? Is it is it more based on them paying interest on loans or? Does it seem that it's profitable enough that that's easily recapturable? Because that's just. That's a cost there, and you still have everything else that goes with it.
Yeah, so you're right, you know, the. Their fifteen million for their facility, for that facility um is covered through um. I can't remember the funding stream, what it was out of the um Infrastructure Act, but they said that's free for them, which is why they own that piece. So we can't get that, they do. So they own that piece for a minimum of five years. The hundred million for the equipment, essentially, yeah, they take out a loan, and then they pay back that loan every year through the fees that we pay them to process waste. For that that part of the equipment.
Okay.
For that stream over the twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Provided that they meet them in the diversion.
And they are suspect from their commodity streams and their energy.
Right.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think they feel like they've penciled out the recycle side to pay back that equipment. And then, you know, that's why they have a, we pay you after this amount.
Right.
I've trunch, trudged around that on that site, you know, years ago, um, with. Different brokers and books looking at it. And what I know is there's a lot of wet.
Yep.
So, um, can you talk about, and this is a, this is a use, it's not like it's a um. I'm trying to think of a just zero impact use, but there are not. Um, so it's it's actually very intense use. Um, what's the? But what's the thought there? It's very wet, there's a lot of wetland. How much of the site, like, are you? Are you mitigating or you feel, what are you doing?
Yeah, we do the credits, like the banks, yeah, to to mitigate the.
What are you impacting, I guess?
Yeah, so it's a twenty-seven acre bunch of like five lots, um, and it is. I believe eight acres of actual like. Building, right, that is impacting directly like that. Yeah, develop, yeah. And so, um, you know, and the rest of it obviously. Isn't um on that regard, except for, you know, you have to do all of your your stormwater and then things like that as you, you know, impact that. And so, you know, we looked at, you know, there were a couple of things, reasons why we ended up in that area. One was that we also, not only did we not want to disrupt the curbside collection. Um, but we also did not want to tell haulers, you know, you need to drive thirty miles that way. So the. Really, the only applicable places that we saw that you could build a facility like this. Um, and not maybe have the impact, we're out like um kind of towards Lane Forest Products by Prairie Road and Beltline. That industrial area out there, ninety-nine, or way out forty-second, um, uh, past forty-second, right, right next to IP. Right next to IP, essentially. Um, and then, you know, we looked at a few properties in the Goshen area. And then we looked at the landfill as well, which also is well ones. You know, you, I mean, the the everywhere we go at the landfill every time we do, that's why we have Palmus Prairie. Because that's our mitigation is where we, yeah, so when we go and we do another landfill cell, we we mitigate over there. Yeah, so. Um. You know, but this allowed haulers at the same haul, if not, you know, mile half shorter round trip. Um. But yeah, that that was the nature of it, was that it was really the only property that we have. There was one property in Goshen that um that had much less impacts, it wouldn't sell.
So how many acres of wetland are being?
Yeah, so it's that um, that I. It's a, I don't know exactly. I believe it's eight to nine acres is what the facility is, and the impact, you know, you have fifty-foot buffers around. The entire facility. And so I don't know the exact um number off the top of my head. Some of that's that we have consultant that helped us do the wetlands mitigation. Um, thanks. So I could, I'd have to follow up with you to get you the exact number.
Dennis?
Yeah, another piece that you mentioned in passing was, you know, the second largest pieces beyond household and. Commercial and these kinds of accounts is construction demolition debris. Um, and it's not surprising, I'm old school and I take my garbage to the transfer station and, you know. Dump my bins in the commingled recycling there. And there's a lot of that debris showing up even at the transfer station. Any notions of reducing that? Um, because that just seems like. Um, boy, about a waste of some really good materials. Um, even if, you know, more of it showed up at Brim or Habitat.
Yeah, we'd love it.
Kind of thing, so.
Yeah, we tried a few different things with Brim, where, you know, we did con- consultations where they would go on to job sites. Um, Portland has an interesting, you know, requirement in for older homes in particular that you're required before you can. Um, remodel or rebuild there, you're required to get that assessment and get rid of it. So I think short of that. It's really difficult, you know. What we have found is when people come in, they've got a load, it's got a bunch of lumber in it. We're like, you know, if you went to the back, you could put that out the wood, they're like. This guy paid me to come here and get out of here. I just wanna, you know, so. You know, one option could be if we rebuild the Glenwood Transfer Station eventually, you're you're not gonna be dumping it in a pit anymore. You'd be dumping on a deck. And you could try to separate some of that out because it was there. We toyed with the idea of having. Contractors dump in one area there and then trying to sift through the materials that's in the pit. But it is a difficult thing, and then it's compounded by, you have, you know, Delta, you know, has their own, um, you know. Landfill essentially that isn't lined and, you know, is allowed to take all those construction materials. So you got a bunch of great material going there as well. Um, that we'd like to get a hold of. And you, if you could stop it from going there, you could really turn a corner, right? Where you could say, well, now all of it goes to this place. Um, and you could get the reuse, but um, yeah.
Right, and it's not a good time for regulation on construction when we're trying to build more housing. And particularly Lake County, looking at rebuilding what happened up to McKinsey.
Right, right.
So I understand some of that use, but.
It's really difficult.
Curious about some of the thoughts.
And I say it's compounded with the the transfer station system. We have more transfer stations in in Lane County than anywhere I've ever seen, ever. Um, and, you know, part of that then is all those materials are going there as well, you know, so you've got all these small areas to. To take them that are, you know, they're hard enough to keep them open. And so, you know, you just have a lot of places people can take. Materials, you know, as opposed to it goes to to one area, but that is a. The next kind of big, big thing to try to figure out. It's a little more complicated, um, based on the the variety of the the, you know, the diversity of that material stream, but.
Is the stuff in the pit gonna go to the clerk?
Um, so in the first couple of years, it would basically just be curbside materials. Um, our transfer station waste is so bulky and varied that it it could be pretty difficult to put. Large couches and things like that through, um, you know, hot tubs, boats, they get kind of crushed up, but go there. Um. The one caveat is we're looking at how we could separate out Florence, because Florence has commercial haulers. Um, that just like we do here, it's just that they dump with everybody else, and it all goes to landfill. We'd like to separate out. That commercial stream from those curbside and able to take that there. And then we, we're hoping that as we learn more about, you know. Those waste streams and how it performs, we might be able to add to it.
Just a quick one, if I may, um, you know, and I could report back, um, I'm going to Hawaii for a couple of weeks and uh. Celebrating my seventy-fifth, woo-hoo for me. Um, and uh, um, I looked through stores and there's. One at the waste transfer station on the Big Island. And I'm gonna go check it out because they are sorting. At that, at that site.
Yeah.
Um, and putting some of it out there for resale. And I don't know if it's Brim kind of stuff. Because I go to the transfer station and the stuff that ends up in the pit, I almost, like, I get a ladder. You know, that recovery stuff, you're just looking at the good stuff.
I will tell you, interestingly, at Glenwood, we have both St. Vincent de Paul and Brim on site now.
Right.
And um, people can divert that over to there, and it is amazing the people that still.
Still don't.
Don't, yeah.
Dump it.
Yeah.
That is a model. Sorry, no, go ahead, no. Um, there are, like, I think it's man, is Van Zanina coastal community that has, they have a MRF out there that has a store because I met. The proprietor and one of the people that works there at one of the AOR conferences, and it's, it is a model for sure, but we are just have really robust. Partners with like other folks that can plug into the transfer station. So that's really.
We're really pretty blessed in our community with the amount of reuse, um, companies that we have.
Well, we have some history here, and when Alexi mentioned some of what you called it, um, what did you call it? The 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 the. The self-sort system, you you had a label for it, but at any rate, um, that's going back to where it started with Garbaggio decades ago in this town. Um, you know, Garbaggio was the model, and then Brim was, you know, begin recycling the natural group.
The first, yeah.
We forgot what that, you know, acronym in memory meant.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just gonna jump in because this, we're working with like a sort of a new format, and this is really the first time we've sort of had a. Larger meeting where we didn't have, we had the the Golden Gardens one, which was a little bit different, but, um. We did incorporate time if the, if, I'm gonna just ask you guys, if the commission wanted to just discuss among this issue among ourselves. Um, we have until, you know, about seven, ten. Um, we've kind of just, I just kind of let it flow with all the questions because that seemed really appropriate, but we can continue to do that. Or we can try, if we want to discuss it among ourselves, we can also do that. Because we're trying to incorporate that time in into the meeting rather than have us leave and not think about what we maybe should have asked or wanted to ask. Or something like that. So it's new for everyone, but I just want to give, I kind of felt like I want to throw it out to see what you guys. Felt like doing with the rest of the time until ten, about ten after seven. So what is that? About ten more, eleven more minutes?
I like the idea of getting to talk amongst ourselves.
Okay, sunny. See how that goes, see if anyone wants to actually talk about it besides me and Courtney, no, and Dennis. No, I'm kidding. But, um, yeah, so I want to thank you for the presentation and coming back again. I'm sure we'll see you again.
I'm I'm happy to do it, yeah. Thank you all, appreciate it. You're doing.
Absolutely. So, again, this is a new. Format. I don't really know how it's gonna always work, and some, like, sometimes it just is very organic, uh, no pun intended. So anyway, does, does, like, how are you guys feeling about the presentation and are there, like, concerns or? Excitement, or did you feel like your questions were addressed? And or anything else that you guys want to talk about amongst us? And and you too. I mean, you can ask him question, I mean, we have this format, and you are welcome to ask questions of whatever presenter or speaker is here. I mean, I know you've been on committees and things before, but we really value that. Definitely, we try.
I feel like he had definitely addressed a lot of the questions I've heard coming from the community about rate increases, um. Recycling, which will be further addressed with the um Recycling Modernity. Recycling Modernization Act uh changes that also come in. And um, the the natural gas stuff was interesting for sure. Um, yeah, the first thing that came to my mind was. Why, why don't we up the renewable gas percentage of our local gas? Yeah, and then the. The lifespan of the Brent landfill, um. There's context there that I always have to share with, like. You know, with people when I'm talking to them about that, just in general, like, well, our land. well, our landfill is, and there's always the like, well, why are we dealing with it now kind of thing as well. Um I'm curious about the haulers and I didn't want to ask this because I'm sure this is constantly changing. The haulers like support, like there's been active uproar of from haulers that have like sent out, we've probably gotten them ourselves, like letters to their customers about not supporting this, so um. I hope that gets moved over there and like I'm curious about what some of the pushback. I'd like to hear from them, like what that's about, if it's just a rate increase as he alluded to, or if it's something else. But um, yeah, I thought that was a great presentation and answered a lot of my question.
Um, I, I uh, I thought, I actually thought there was questions that he should have known the answer for and I found myself a little bit concerned um with some of the statements like, yeah, I don't know. We really haven't talked about that level of detail. I kind of thought like, well, and who has? Um because like we're entering and the, the the county is entering into a legal agreement on a investment of a site and that ultimately the taxpayers will owe and if they're not asking that question, then it does. Um, and I think the wetland elements, it's just always been a very tricky site and so um, I kind of thought we, that's just something that seems very big and I'm curious. So I think that that was a part for me that, um I'm also very aware that um the community, we have a system of infrastructure and the haulers are part of that infrastructures um. PUDs, I mean, it's a different ownership. Those are, they're not just rate payers, they're actually owners in a PUD. And so how this project moves forward in a way that that infrastructure still is symbiotic and can thrive is really important because we still need all of them. The project doesn't seem to improve any of the existing facilities. It just adds another. That seems kind of cool. But, so that, that was just a piece for me that I, I don't understand how it also rises all the boats for the existing infrastructure and facilities.
Do you mean like the landfill itself?
Yeah, I think, you know, there was a lot of discussion about the landfill, the transfer station, all of these facilities that are kind of aging and then need also of improvement. They're not gonna go away. They're still gonna continue to function. So kind of what is that plan for making sure we don't just invest in the shiny thing, but we we get that whole system where it needs to be if all those pieces are still part of the system.
And so the place that he seemed to not know was bulk handling systems is gonna get a lot of the money and the financials and he's leaving it to them. They've decided rethink we can sell this RNG. And we hope they sell enough so the county gets some money, but they're a business that has experience. I think they're gonna, they're not gonna enter into this and go, I hope we can sell it. They must have somebody lined out and, you know, so that's, that seemed where he was least educated is what bulk handling systems is gonna do because they don't have to tell him. I don't, I just, that was my take.
I think along the same line, like I, I asked the, in the the question list, I, those were my questions about EPUD on the end and and I felt like it was a little bit disappointing that like all of it's not local, like couldn't some of it be local? Like I don't really understand why it's like an all or nothing, like if EPUD is you know, and and he didn't really say either like how long they're gonna continue to collect and at what rate. Um he said they will, but then he said it, but it potentially goes down, but he didn't really say, like, there was no timeline there. I was a little hoping for a timeline, but I put the question in there, so I didn't wanna like push it. But I was also sort of like, okay, if you are collecting all of this and there's this you know, municipality right there, like why is this not, this seems like it would just not be that hard to incorporate them into a larger plan. I don't know, maybe it is really hard, but.
You mean to, to because EPUD is collecting methane gas off Short Mountain as it stands.
Correct.
And when we put fewer organics into Short Mountain, the amount of gas they pull off the top of Short Mountain is gonna be reduced.
Correct.
The gases instead gonna be generated mostly at the biodigester.
Right.
And then injected into the pipeline.
That goes away.
Handling system and it goes into the bulk gas grid. So like, you might cook on it, but it's just gonna go on, it's gonna go on the grid.
Right.
Pipeline somewhere.
Right, that's what I'm saying is like, so.
But there's, you're saying there's no consideration or your, your concern is there's no consideration for EPUD to have access to some of the new gas stream.
Correct, but I, I mean, it isn't necessarily a concern. I know it is of mine particularly, but it is a concern that has been voiced in city council and other places that I've heard. And so I'm just curious, like, it just seems to me like it could be an easy to me, it seems easy, right? Like an agreement that could possibly be made where EPUD receives some of the, they purchase some of that natural gas. It doesn't all leave and maybe they purchase it at a rate that is I mean, just as part of the whole good neighbor policy. And I lived next door to a landfill for like seventeen years and there was all kinds of things that the landfill did as a good neighbor policy for the eco um community that I lived in to the point of where they would buy your house if you could not sell it at market rate, waste management. And I mean, there are things that happen out in this world that are like that to keep your neighbors happy with living next to a landfill and and being near and around a landfill. So I was just kind of surprised that that wasn't like, well, yeah, we're gonna work with EPUD to try to make sure that its business is usual for them in that community.
Successful.
Right. I just thought that was a little whether it's the right thing to do or not, I just was kind of surprised that it's like, oh no, they're just gonna fade away, no matter how much money they put into collecting that methane.
Seems to me like a lot of the the gas mystery about what's happening with the gas is more about, we don't know what kind of rate they're looking to get for that gas. And I'm sure it's like given it's a whole new project, anaerobic ju- digestors are not cheap, you know, it's like um I'm excited to have one, but it's like, yeah, I think it, it might not be about the localness, but like and that might be negotiable. I don't really know.
Right, it's like twelve thousand homes or something like that. I mean, it's like, it should be a drop in the bucket.
I would feel like our, like, like when, or like local, like uh, gas com- companies would be interested in a local production of nap of green. Price is not something that was discussed.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, so that kind of brings back to one of the questions that was submitted in in advance. And we didn't want to talk about it. It really probably wasn't up to him to talk about, which is what is the appropriate role for the city of Eugene?
Yeah, that was exactly my question. Yeah.
I would say. I mean, I would say education, like that was a part, like the education part is the role that I like, we have been placed in a position to, to like, that's why we requested this topic is because that is being inquired, at least to me. I don't know about you all, but um and education about it to create some um, there is gonna, I mean, if there are no changes to collection, I, I don't know, but educating about like the things that he was talking about, putting organics in the way, the, you know, compost bin versus the regular trash and.
Keeping up with your composting.
Yeah, and I mean, we created that intercept survey about why people might not be doing that. And I was interested very much in like how he said that the rates of that didn't go up, that we still have quite, or the rates of organics in our landfill have not gone down significantly as a result of that program, so. Um, but yeah, in terms of behavior change, education, in terms of clarity, like ticking off the top questions that like just some, sharing some facts about like rate increase projections, uh landfill lifespan, benefits and impact of the that's what we're calling it. Um and uh, yeah, just, I would say education first and foremost. Like how, what do y'all think?
Yeah, yeah, but, but, yeah, but how and when and, you know, where does the information come from? I mean, yeah, really, they should be doing it and we could pick up some materials that they might create and extend that. I'm not changing my mind, I'm just like, it seems like that they and the county should be taking the lead on that.
There is a lot of collaboration between City of Eugene and County, Lake County Waste Management in terms of education campaigns. So that I'm sure that will be part of the plan, but I, I guess I.
So from a, from a sort of jurisdictional perspective, for lack of a better word, it's uh county facility on county land with a county contract. And so Eugene sort of as a city um doesn't have a ton of role in it beyond sort of like helping with the franchise free agreements to make sure that the franchise followers can pass. But Eugene is a community, I think you're spot on that helping with that education is sort of where the role of the community would be. And I think particularly when you look at things like you know, some of the stuff you brought up about the compost, how the uptake for the composting is not what they would hope. You know, some of those pieces of helping to make sure that folks are, are getting stuff to the right place. Particularly because, you know, it's not perusing any changes occurred. And so, and I, you know, I know the county, both the county and the city do a lot of work on education surrounding these issues and so doing that collaboration.
All right, we kind of gotta wrap it up because we're seven twelve and we've got one more thing to do and we adjourn at twenty after. Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm just gonna like do the elephant.
All right. Um, all right, so I, we can, we can reflect on if we like this format. I think it's kind of nice for us to be able to have a chance to talk. I personally like it. Um, so moving forward, we can, we can think about if, if we like this model. Um, so we have um council staff and commissioner updates for ten minutes or roughly eight minutes now, I guess. And I think Dennis had something.
Let's find that order like counselors.
I've been to one council meeting, so unless you all really wanna hear a lot about the pyro fee, I don't really have much update.
I'll have, I have a couple of things. Um, next month, uh urban forestry is coming. They'll be talking about the urban forestry management plan and seeking your feedback on that. It's in a draft form right now and um that will be uh, so that's the first topic they'll be talking about. And then the other thing they'll be talking about is um so uh, the last street bond that was passed, part of that money was earmarked for street trees and uh the Sustainability Commission is the sort of body to designated to provide feedback on how the money for street trees is spent. So um they'll be coming to talk about the projects that are slotted for twenty twenty-five, I believe. So if you have questions um right now, I'd like to capture those so that I can share those with the presenters.
Finally question, which is not so much for, but about staff, but but what um, when you say we are, uh it's our role to advise about the the street trees, will that be something we're expected to do next week or coming next month? Do we get the plan and they'll come back at some point in time? How does that work?
Uh, so you are the, that's for street trees that you're the designated body, not for the urban forestry management plan, but you are being engaged on that plan. Uh, so I'm not sure with the question.
So the question is, what, are we, if we're just hearing about it next month, where are we expected to provide feedback then or is it feedback then?
You'll be expected to provide feedback next month after they present.
So this will be an ongoing process. They were here last year.
Yeah, 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 I remember.
And talked about that and laid out the broad plan for what they're doing. And the idea is to come back to this commission every year with kind of status updates, where the kind of the spend plan is, we're gonna focus on that whole this particular year, whatever that is on the street trees thing, just to sort of get some feedback from this commission. As well as to make sure they're being kind of bonded, just to get feedback on what they're doing and if they're focusing on right here. So the ongoing thing is it's gonna be several years of them coming back to their bodies.
Right.
Well, is our feedback just looking at the street trees piece or the broader urban forestry plan? Because the urban forestry plan, the commission, a number of years ago had proposed some, you know, tighter um monitoring and regulation around heritage trees.
Right.
And I would like to, for example, ask that question. Are there any updates on what's happening on Heritage Street? We've been asking that.
I just think, and I just think seeing the draft of whatever it is that they're wanting feedback on, you know, as early on as we can get it.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, cool. Didn't they build in their request for feedback into their presentation last year? Or was it?
Yeah, so I feel like.
Probably gonna be similar to that. So I felt like that was a pretty productive way of getting.
Well, and I'll provide, you know, I'll share the information in a packet, share it a week ahead.
You also have a question. Yeah, um, the ice storm, uh I'm curious how that impacted their plan, whether there's funds to deal with that, if there is any particular response to how many trees were lost.
So this is street tree specific.
Are those, yeah, there was no.
No, no, I mean your question.
Yeah, the street.
Forestry is like.
No, no, the street trees that were destroyed in the ice storm.
Yeah.
In Eugene, yeah, those other ones. Because I know, I remember last year they talked a lot about managing them and watering them and stuff, but I don't remember there being uh funding for a mass disaster replacement and management of like that kind of thing.
No, because I feel like there was a, they were talking about how expensive it was to remove dead trees, like unsuccessful trees and do that was like one of their hugest expenses.
Yeah.
They'll be on the chair because.
So that's gonna go.
Yeah.
We weren't hit as bad as like Springville because of the breeding cycles and other management practices the city's taken on. There was damage, but it wasn't.
Yeah, I noticed that, but I'm just curious like how that impacted their plan.
Andy, you have another question or is?
It's about Emerald Ash Porters. Um, I want to talk, I still have this uh idea I'm noodling on about uh some kind of public-private partnership to encourage planting of species that are not ash in places where there are a lot of ash. And I'm interested in how, whether the um, whether the staff think that's reasonable, how that might work, what that has to do with street trees and urban forestry. They have mentioned that, yes, there's a detailed inventory of street trees and urban forestry that includes ash and they're quite aware that the EAB is in, in, in Oregon, but I'm interested in the little more community angle on that. And that can be a discussion that we raise the topic and see where it goes.
And of course, I mean, if you think of a question in, you know, ten minutes from now, email it. To Tim, yeah, like or, or, you know, that's, you can do that right up until a week before, a few days before. Um, so she can get that over to them and get it in the packet as well. Um, so we've got only like minutes.
Yeah, um, my, my last update is um, oh, was yeah, can we move on from urban forestry? If you have other questions, email to me. Um, my last update is um, if you've been tracking our building decarb work, we just had a work session in December um to city council. It went really well. We basically identified what our priorities are gonna be for the next year related to decarb. So um I'd highly recommend you all watch that work session. I'd be happy to send the link. Um and basically some of the priorities we're gonna be focusing on is um uh, creating a larger potentially mandatory home energy score program. Um we're gonna be developing a communications campaign. We're pursuing a large grant with Beyond Toxic to do um like an electrification support service program. Uh, and a few others. There's like three priorities for residential, four priorities for commercial. And a lot of that emerged out of the engagement we did last year. And then sort of this streamlining process to figure out what you know, screening matrix to figure out what, what priorities we were the most ready to move forward. So um if you want more deal details, please watch that city council session.
Yeah, December ninth session. Good, good work.
Did you guys watch it? Who watched it? Oh, okay, awesome.
We do our homework.
Yeah.
She'll send the link.
Yes, I'll send the link.
For all the people that did not do their homework.
Okay, that's it.
All right, so did, I know we're running out of time, but Dennis, did you have an education committee?
Yeah, just a quick one that I communicated with. Just a quick one that I communicated with Danielle and we'll be scheduling uh, um, you know. Early February, I'm meeting that group and the primary questions are, we've got a couple or more. Um, things that I'm trying to finalize scheduling with neighborhood association, um, Southeast Neighbors and Laurel Hill Valley. Um, I've indicated an interest in seeing the presentation that was developed, we're looking at February, March dates, but I haven't been able to pin down with them yet. Um, and then uh, what I'm hoping is people on the committee beyond that. Um, what are people's thoughts in terms of next steps for the education committee? Um, and outreach committee, because there will be a number of the neighborhoods where people did tabling before. There's been very positive feedback from the neighborhood associations appreciated our presence, so I think we'll wanna be a continuing presence. Um, and think about that kind of content, um, so um, really that's priorities and terms of what I see. For agendas for a meeting, we'll be scheduling some.
Um, I have an opportunity to bring up to everybody's attention, um. We have a group of, uh, so Mecca, Bring, City of Eugene, Link County Waste Management. Are co-producing a um, big Earth Day event called Reimagine Eugene, we received the um. Downtown Program Fund Grant for that and what we're trying to do is bring. Uh, everyone activating and engaging folks around sustainability for Earth Day under one roof, so we don't compete against each other. But I think we should have an education table or a table there if that's something. Um, to think about, it would be a really great opportunity, um. And I'm in charge of sending out those invites, so I just wanted to bring awareness to this group that that's happening, it'd be a really good time to. Let people know who we are and do some of our intercept surveys and like whatever else we have developed by April thirteenth. So that's the date, last day of Food Waste Prevention Week. And it's at the Pavilion Downtown.
Oh, good. Dennis, when you schedule the meeting, could you perhaps try to schedule after two or three PM, start of school until?
Yeah.
We want it to be accessible as many and we can do, uh, you know, like. Line blank, you know, the name, I thought we'll check everybody's schedule apps.
Oh, I do it all, well, so just so that as staff liaisons, so that I can coordinate with Dennis, who else had been interested in serving on the education and outreach committee? So Tom, okay, wait, let me write these names down, Tom.
Jan.
Jan.
John.
John. Billy.
Billy. Dennis.
Dennis. Okay, cool.
This is my clean and reliable backup energy turn. Okay. I'm gonna hang out.
Great, that sounds great, thank you.
Okay, I can send you the meeting information, because that needs on regulatory basis.
Sorry.
And I'll, I'll send you the Google Doc where we, the Google Drive folder where we have some documents that will work.
Okay.
And I can, we'll go and catch up.
We do like a one-on-one.
All right.
Do we have something to present from that committee or?
We don't.
No, it's not done.
Okay. It's all right.
He's optimistic.
All right, well, thank you, everyone.
I just have one question, did we have anyone listening today?
I don't think so.
Yeah, we we did.
Oh, we did.
I'd really like for that to be announced in our meetings too, because we don't know, you know.
Right, so we know who's in the room virtually.
Usually we can see it, but not in this particular format, we can't see.
Do we need it announced or could it be something that's captured on the minutes? Thinking about, we wanna encourage people to attend if they're feeling anxious about. Being called out, I wouldn't want them to not.
Yeah, you think that people are anxious. Um, it's a public meeting and normally before we had online thing, you would see a person in the room and you'd get to know who was there and I mean, it just seems like we should know. So.
Yeah, should that be, maybe I can talk with like CMO about, like maybe at the beginning of the meeting or during the public comment period. I'll see if there, that's the time that we could sort of announce who's all in the room, I'll just check with the CMO to see if there's any like.
Okay.
If you just click. Having tracked that, yeah, we could show it.
Right, like.
And having tracked it, one, you know, there were ten people at one point who showed up, so there were various people and other people just, they just had first names and so like, I don't think. So for some others, we may not be able to fully identify.
Today, there were ten people?
Uh, it's in the middle of the presentation at one time.
Oh, cool.
Very interesting. Maybe just pull it up so we see the list so we know if people are there or not, we don't necessarily need to know like their personal information.
Okay, I could have done that.
I mean, it's up and up.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that would be fun.
Open Walker, David Vanderhagen.
Yeah.
Currently on.
All right, well, with that. Exciting ending, um, we're gonna adjourn and thank, thanks, everybody.